...the January ninth, two thousand and eighteen middle school committee meeting. To get the meetings started, we'll start with a roll call. Ms. Roach is absent this evening. Mr. Conroy?
Here.
Superintendent Nick Gustafson?
Here.
Mr. Catalano?
Here.
Ms. Sol is expected to be here, so since she'll just be tardy. Teacher representative?
Here.
Student representative?
Presenting.
Do we have anyone sign in for open session?
We do not.
Okay. We're thrilled to have, oh, sorry, before we start, I'm a little rusty. The meeting's being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 PM on Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 37. All of the meeting videos are also posted to the Middle School Public Schools website under the School Committee section. We are very excited to have a big crew here this evening, which we will get to kind of first on our agenda. But before we move to that, maybe we'll do a student update and teacher update, and then we'll go from there.
Alright, I don't have much, but most of what I have to say has to do with the girls' varsity track team. They recently won against Dedham and Bellingham. As well, members of the team Bethany Steiner, Katherine Mallowitz, and Lucy Clayton have all qualified for states. And then the boys' varsity track team has also recently won against Bellingham. And then one more thing, there's a three-v-three ice hockey tournament. It's a fundraiser for outdoor pursuits. The ice rinks were recently built in the football stadium outside, and we need to pay for them though, so the fundraiser is going towards that. It's on January twentieth. Teams of three. It's thirty dollars per team, and it's ages fourteen plus.
Great. Thanks, Josh.
You're welcome.
And I just wanted to let the town know that the rinks aren't open for people to use, and they are located on the football field, so. The Barnes &amp; Noble Book Fair will be back February ninth and February tenth at the Bellingham Barnes &amp; Noble store. Clyde Brown, the third and fourth graders are invited to join in the America's Battle for the Books. It started yesterday, and they are eligible to read books through March eighth, so they should probably get started. January twenty-fifth, grade four will have a concert. And for the high school, March seventh, we're having our Small School Big Conference Career Fair, and they are still looking for more volunteers that would be interested in sharing information with the high school students about careers. So any town residents or people that you might know that would be willing to come are welcome. Term two will end Friday, January twentieth, and term three will begin January twenty-second. And there is a senior project going on. Ruby Passifus is collecting new or gently-used clothing, winter clothing, in support of the Vietnam Veterans of America. There's a box in the high school front office where items can be dropped off. February fifteenth, the prom fashion show will happen between seven and nine. And there's a college planning night February first, if you're up.
Great, I'm gonna take advantage of the fact that we have many parents in the audience tonight, so for the Small School Big Futures, if people are interested, I think it's, is it Marco Dickey and the?
Yes, Marco Dickey and Riley Stephens, and they do have a survey, I believe it's on a Google Doc, that they would like potential participants to fill out, but if you email them, they may also, they have a Twitter feed which they may have information on as well. I didn't remember to ask them that, but.
Great, I would encourage anyone, it was an excellent event last year, so if anyone has the time that they could take for taking a day to do that with the students, that would be.
Right, and it's actually only, it's a half-day that day.
Oh, good.
So it's only between eight and eleven AM, I believe, so it's not, it's not an entire day commitment, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. We only have one action item, so maybe we'll work through that, and then we will get to time and learning. For the consideration of approved the twelve-nineteen, sorry, school committee meeting minutes.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Conroy.
I make a motion to approve the December nineteenth meeting of the Middle School Committee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the twelve-nineteen-seventeen school committee meeting minutes. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Question carries. Alright.
Madam Chair, I'm pleased to introduce Maureen Knowlton, the principal of the middle school, who's here to speak a little bit about, and we have many, many students and teachers here to speak about our, some of our personalized learning initiatives at the middle school level.
Thank you so much for having us here tonight. We're delighted to be here to show off some of our student work. I commend all of these brave and willing students for coming and talking a little bit about what they're doing in middle school classes. We have some representatives from TV production class, from Mr. Venom's Unified Arts Team class, which is new this year, and Mrs. Sicardo's ELA class, which has been studying civil rights. So, thank you very much. These examples of student work represent some of the passions and interests that the kids have, that they've chosen to research and do a project on. They've been given choices, they've been given the opportunity to kind of take something they really enjoy doing and run with it. So that's a little bit of what you'll see today. So I'm gonna start with TV production sixth graders, Ee and John and Spencer, are gonna come and talk to you about their TV production project.
Okay, so my name is Spencer, and this is my show called Spencer Sports Update that I've been working on in TV production class with Miss Manion. And basically what it is, is every week I come in with a pre-written script about the NFL, and I sit down at a table and just talk about what I've written, my thoughts, upcoming games, past games, stuff like that, with the help of John and Keen as the director and audio director. So, this, here's my website that last trimester I made with Mr. D, the tech teacher, and basically I just wanted to kind of do, and like unified art within a unified art to help out the show. So it's called Spencer Sports Update Online, and this is the homepage where I just say what my show is, and here is a link to the playlist on the Middle School Public Schools YouTube channel about, well, it's the playlist of all my videos. And here I have inserted all of the videos, and I would like to show you the most recent one that I actually uploaded today. Okay, so I think I'm gonna turn it over to Keen and John. So I'm Keen Dickey, and I am the director for Spencer's show along with a couple other shows. So basically what I do is I make the effects that just show what the show is and who Spencer is. And so I have done over ten shows. This is the twelfth. This is the twelfth, and so I do a couple other shows, such as Sam's Game Time, G&amp;J's Art Show, Evan's NBA Update. I've done a rabble concert in the school auditorium, and I feel like I'm really passionate about this, and I love this environment.
Alright, hi, I'm John, I'm the audio director, and so basically what my role is, is everybody's Spencer will come, of course, prepared, and I'll just test his audio and make sure the audio levels are all good, and then he just kind of follows it from there. I've really been happy to take all of these opportunities that have been given, such as go to the rabble concert and do the audio for that. I've also been able to do multiple shows that have been really fond to film, and it's something that I really enjoy, and I, it is something that I'm really impassioned about.
Have a quick question? What's a rabble concert?
Oh, so it's basically this singer slash musician who basically came in to the school to talk about some different topics, and he basically has had like shows on, songs on different shows, and that's your wall, and yeah, me, Keen, and Spencer did, made control room for that.
Very cool, nice work, guys.
That's it.
Thank you, guys. Ah, great.
Do you love another pun in the episode?
Luckily, we have a type person here.
This is Sicardo. She puts two rap songs.
Sorry about that, you're on cue, you'd have to go, I don't know why.
So my students, as Ms. Knowlton said, did a unit, we're doing a unit on civil rights, and so we learned some basic information as a class about the fifties and the early sixties and civil rights, and then we've been exploring the history of civil rights through music. And they have then gone to the library and used internet and however they want to, to do research on some aspects of civil rights that they found interesting. So the projects range in presentation and in topic.
Let's get a better signal. Today we'll be watching a live television program of March on Washington. Okay, here it is.
Okay, it's starting.
Wow, it's a morning presentation speech. This is a diorama of the March on Washington. Over here is the crowd, and Martin Luther King gave him his famous "I Have a Dream" speech. Over here is the reflection pool in Washington Monument. And this is the Lincoln Memorial. Here are ten backs. The March on Washington is titled "This for Jobs and Freedom." At the March on Washington, Martin Luther King gave his famous "I Have a Dream" speech. The big six leaders of the civil rights organized the March on Washington. The big six leaders were Phil Rendell, Roy Wilkins, Martin Luther King Jr., Roy Wilkins, and John Lewis. More than two hundred thousand people participated in the March on Washington. At the March on Washington, people held up signs that said "I am a man and we demand voting rights now," page fifty of what was the March on Washington. At the march, a few people fainted from the heat, and one person died from a heart attack. At the end of the day, the leaders of the march met with President John F. Kennedy. One of the results of the March on Washington is Congress passed the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, which banned racial discrimination in public space, page one hundred and to what was the March on Washington. Another result is Congress passes Voting Rights Act, outlawing discriminatory voting rights, about this, and what was the March on Washington.
My name is Elijah. And I'm out of park. And we decided for our project that we're gonna do a pop song and a rap song.
Yeah.
About?
About Jackie Robinson going to the civil rights. Um, we need the beats.
Can you guys grab the microphone too when you?
Hello? Hello?
As long as it's on, it should work with the.
It should have been on, it should be popping. While they're getting ready, if you wanna see some of their civil rights projects, they're on a playlist on the YouTube channel, and they're amazing. She does a phenomenal job with this, in the student, the Zoom job, yeah. They're incredible. This song will be, we've recorded it a few times, we're just tweaking it a little bit, but it's, it'll be on there as well.
So I don't think that amplifies, but I do think it records. So I'm gonna repeat that too for the taping purposes, so all of the videos that the classes did for the civil rights projects are on the school's YouTube channel?
Yeah, they have a playlist, so you can see some of the projects from last year as well.
Okay, great, so there's a playlist, so you can see this year's projects and some projects from last year as well. Thank you.
And Danielle, can they get there from our website?
I think so, I think there's a link to our.
Studio one oh three, thank you.
Jackie was born near a farm, near Carraway, Georgia. He had a family that looked after him, and Jackie's brother died in a Coccodini with a picture and the MLB. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, 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 'cause Jackie is the coolest guy you'll ever see. He even helped in the civil rights, 'cause Jackie is the coolest guy you'll ever see. He even helped in the civil rights. People would say, "Get out, get out." People would say, "Get out, get out." But he took you like you're nothing at all, yeah? I'm gonna bring it out, and he's gonna spit some fu 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 fu.
Thanks, E. Strike, we almost hit the homerun, b b b, yeah, let's make it to the house, gonna tell you some facts, let's go. First got turned into the MLB, to the Dodgers, to the Red Sox, it was tough for him, people give him some death threats, especially his front windows. They should have thrown the ball at his face, and obviously would've called it a strike. A lot of people should be treated the same way as whites. Now we're gonna bring the mic back to E.
'Cause Jackie is the coolest guy.
Coolest guy.
You'll ever see. He even helped in the civil rights.
Civil rights.
'Cause Jackie is the coolest guy you'll ever see. He even helped in the civil rights. People would say, "Get out, get out." People would say, "Get out, get out." But he took you like you're nothing at all, yeah, 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 yeah.
That was awesome. Great job, guys.
Good job.
I think I want an on.
Hello, my name's Anna.
Hi, I'm Lucy.
I think your girl needs to come over here, because they're recording. So just, it's not gonna make it louder, but it will get, make the sound work. So when you speak, speak it.
The flag we use in the National Anthem are at most the center of the United States of America. Most people stand for them, but some people sit down. Some people kneel, and some people walk. But why? People sit down and kneel to protest against racism, against African-Americans and other people of color. There are leaders NFL players in human protest.
This story is in the press, and things like this still are on the table. Firemen at the fire school against blacks. The Brim came firemen in Alabama who were protesting with water in nineteen sixty-two. Why the Brim came Alabama school response sent the dogs after black protest?
Who started the protest? The person who stood out the most for protesting the cost of rifle was the forty-niners Colin Kaepernick. Evidence includes of the CNN news saying Kaepernick said he was compelled to kneel in part because of a state of police mob shootings that resulted in the deaths of black men, including Sterling, and, and O, and Alton Sterling, said CNN news. Castle and Sterling were two people that died because of police shootings. Castle was from Minnesota, and Sterling was from Texas. The shootings helped bring about the Black Lodge and Madison.
Another NFL player that protested was Michael Bennett. He was part of the Seattle Seahawks, and kneel protestant, and two of his ankles helped him storm the killed. Colin Kaepernick chose to sit on the bench during the National Anthem to protest against police violence. No, no one knows at the time, it wasn't until August twenty-sixth, two thousand and sixteen, that his protest got national attention. That was, that was when the backlash began. Eric Reed and Michael Bennett were the reason why. Kaepernick chose to kneel down because he suggested kill.
Michael Bennett said he, Michael Bennett can't say solid, even though he doesn't wanna end up like Colin Kaepernick. He told CNN he won't stand till he sees equality and freedom. Bennett, who grew up in Texas, told CNN that seeing what happened in the child field of the, of the, and then left. Bennett also wants more people to join him in this fight for freedom. Some people in NFL league arms, because they don't wanna take a knee, so they stand up and put their arms together with their teammates, because they don't completely agree to the rule of law.
Some, some other people that kneel, or Chili's and James Logan Highfield, they also took a knee, because after seeing Kaepernick protesting, they saw their opportunity to cooperate show injustice. Their fans and coaches were surprised, outraged by his service, but in spite of this, he continues to kneel during the National Anthem. When they first knew, their coach was upset and said they couldn't do that, but they didn't care. When they had a new coach for the new season, he said it would be his first choice, but he was respectful of their rights. Another person that sits down during the pledge, which is my sister, who is a student at UCLA, I asked, I asked, and she said, "As the protest against the racism presented in America, she's sick of this, and this is her way, and her amendment."
But those who see people protest think otherwise. They believe that it is disrespectful of those who served in the military, of our country, to our flag, the United States of America.
Today Colin Kaepernick has won twelve votes in total, but two will be between two thousand and seventy. These awards are the Eastern One World Courageous Advocate Award from ACLU, and the other one is the Sports Illustrated Muhammad Ali Legacy Award, which is a award that celebrates athletes who use the platform to bring about social change, thetime.com. Kaepernick is recognized for his civil actions, but no team will sign him as a quarterback. In nineteen sixty-two, children in Brimheim, Alabama, who protested, because if adults protested, they would lose their jobs, so children go instead. Now, because Kaepernick protested, he lost his job as a quarterback.
Hi, Shawnee, Lloyd, and Riley and I have been studying civil rights. Unfortunately, Riley cannot be here with us tonight, but we chose to do our project on Malala Yousafzai. We chose Malala because she represents everything we believe in, and that is everyone to have a chance to get an education.
Okay, so let's get started with the video.
Hello, I'm Amelia.
Hi, I'm Shawnee.
Hi, I'm Riley.
Welcome to the interview. Today we have a very special guest to adore.
She's an advocate to girls' education.
She was the youngest ever Nobel Peace Prize winner. I proudly introduce Malala Yousafzai. Welcome to the interview.
Thank you for having me, I'm glad to be here.
So Malala, tell us a little bit about yourself.
I grew up in Pakistan. My father was a teacher, so I grew up around education. When I was eleven, the Taliban banned girls' education, so me and my father just continued to learn.
Did things get better or worse for you?
Things were doing okay, until one day I was on the bus ride to school, and the Taliban stopped the bus and came and gored. No one said anything, but the man had asked for me by name, and someone looked at me and shot me in the head.
Wow, that sounds like a very traumatic experience.
I was going to Birmingham Queen Elizabeth Hospital any minute.
Okay, so let us talk about what you do now.
I started a charity called Malala's Fund for Girls' Education Rights.
Yes, I heard you raised over seven million dollars, congrats.
Yes, we started the charity in two thousand and thirteen.
That's a lot of money for four years.
Yes, it just shows how much people want to learn about girls' education and support it.
That is amazing.
I agree.
We will be donating ten thousand dollars to your cause.
Chukvia.
What does that mean?
That means thank you in Urdu.
At the end of our interview, we always ask our guests these two questions. So what was the most important event in your opinion that happened?
I believe that starting my charity helped a lot and raised a lot of awareness about what happens in Pakistan and countries around it.
What was your most favorite part of Pakistan?
I love every single part but what I do, and I love every part, I don't have a favorite.
Thank you for watching.
Thank you for watching.
Interview. Stay tuned.
So we did an extra, like, part of research, and we researched the Nobel Prize, and we found some facts that we thought were interesting. So we found about that Malala was the youngest Nobel Peace Prize winner ever. She had won one point four million dollars, but she had won it with Khalid Sahtirafi, and she split the money with him. The first Nobel Peace Prize, it went out in nineteen oh-one. People are awarded these prizes for the fields of physics, chemistry, literature, peace, physiology, or medicine, and economic science. And Jean-Paul Sartre turned down the Nobel Peace Prize, well, not the Nobel Peace Prize, but one of the Nobel Prizes, because he had never taken an award for anything, and he didn't wanna start. because he had never taken an award for anything and he didn't want to start again.
Let's make sure this works here. Yeah, come on out, come on out. Good evening. Thanks for letting us come in and talk to you today. I'm Mr. Benham. I teach the STEAM class, which has been a new UA this year for the seventh graders. And these two brave girls have been nice enough to join me and present what they've been doing in class. The STEAM UA kind of came about really organically where we, me and one of the tech guys, Mr. Bush, who was in the back of the area, wanted to build a Street Fighter cabinet for my classroom and brought a bunch of kids in on it and the school was nice enough to give us some funds to buy parts for it. So we built this, you know, the Street Fighter arcade cabinet. And we decided that it would be a good incentive to give kids tokens when we saw good citizenship around the school. It also runs off quarters, so if they use quarters, they can do that. And we've been donating the quarters to Toys for Tots and St. Jude's Children's Hospital. So we thought it was a good way to kind of bring the community into it. Then they approached me to teach this as a UA this year, which has been fantastic. So we've been doing the science, the technology. Each game cabinet we do comes with a different set of problems that we kind of have to figure out as a group. But I was told not to talk that long. I'm gonna let the students go and then they'll tell you exactly what a day in STEAM is like.
Okay, so basically to start out STEAM every day, we'd come in and Mr. Benham would give us a warm-up that it was really fun, kind of just to like just get a warm-up in and be ready to start. And so when we started, he would put different jobs upon the board and we would get to choose which one we wanted to do. We all had to kind of express our creativity through different ways. And it was really fun to get to choose because we all had different perspectives on the project and we all wanted to like put our part in in different ways. And usually it was either painting or like screwing boards together. And it was just a really fun experience and something I've never done before. And if we did something good or something, we'll get a sticker or we'll get some kind of award or a token to play another game. So it was a really fun UA to have.
We had a lot of opportunities to do what we were interested in. So you could paint or cut out the actual design of the board, or you could do the electronics behind the game. And so we really got to do whatever we wanted, whatever we were interested in doing.
We kind of were a small class as well, so our class kind of bonded and we all just like put in our part and our game in the end was really like good. We haven't gone to play yet though, but we're excited to, so. So throughout the project, we did a blog and this was going to be our final grade. So basically my first part of this is my blog and the first part of it is kind of like the beginning of the year. And we had iPads to do pictures on, but this is kind of like the first part where we didn't. And basically we just kind of got measurements and we cut out boards and all that stuff just to get started. And I really have no pictures for you because I didn't have my iPad to take pictures. But here's one of the first like big things we did. We assembled the power switch and we painted the wood. So and then we picked, we chose a picture for the side of the game. We did the NBA game.
NBA Jam.
NBA Jam. So we screened all the sides and we put the top and front together. And me and another student, Ryan, we painted a picture for the other side. So we did Steph Curry on one side and LeBron James, two really famous players. And on the front, we did the Celtics logo. Then this is the front, our like progress on like tracing out the front of the game. This is when we were painting stuff on the side. And I was never really into painting kind of before this class and I got to really like get into it and it was really fun. And I never really expected to like get into that, so that was cool. And then we put the front, like the front, like the name on it in the front. And that was so cool to see because it was really coming together and had all the boards connected. And then this is when we started finishing up. We finished LeBron and that's what he looked like. That was without a background, but we finished LeBron and we started painting Curry. Mr. Benham went in with the highlights and he kind of really like emphasized the picture. And then we painted the back of the Steph. We painted the back of Steph Blue for the Golden State Warriors. And then this is our really horrible 23 because that's LeBron's number. We ended up redoing it because it looked really bad. And then we painted over the 23 because it didn't look right. And then we finished the Celtics logo where we were almost done. And it ended up looking really good in the end. Then we covered up the 23 and put a new one and it looked a lot better. So we put borders around the machine so it looked like meter. And that was, we went over Steph as well because his face didn't look right. And those were the borders around. And then we finished up and it ended up looking really good. We had a few problems throughout, but we got through it and it ended up looking really, really good in the end. And then this was our last class. We all signed the back. And we had a really small class, but we had a lot of fun. And this is something I didn't really, like, I didn't know about it and I was really curious when I heard, first heard I had it. So and then this was our finished product and it was really, really cool. And it was just a fun experience as well.
So I did a slide and I tried to do it by the classes we had, but I couldn't do the first few because I didn't have our iPads then. But I tried to summarize them. Me and my partner filled out a packet determining the measurements of the 23. And we figured out the measurements of it. Then we outlined the woods so we could cut it out and put it all together. Then we started outlining the images on the side of it. We connected the game together to actually get the shape of it out. Then we outlined the drawing for the other side of the arcade game. The logo was put on the top and the Celtics logo was painted. We filled out more of the outlines of the basketball players and some electrical work was done. We did a lot of painting and a light switch got hooked up to the top of the game. The screen was put inside of the game and I started painting the Celtics logo like a ton. So here are some pictures. This is the leprechaun on the front for the Celtics. That's LeBron James and Steph Curry in the new 23. That's the finished product. That's the back with all the signatures. And then that, since Mr. Benham gave out so many stickers for the whole thing, I put it all in a folder and I wanted to include that.
When do you get to play it? When do you get to play it?
Yeah, anytime. Anytime they would spare a minute, they could stop and it's all set.
Where do these live permanently?
Right now they're up in my room. Eventually I'm gonna run out of room, so I've got other teachers, I've got a list of teachers who want one in there.
Great, thanks so much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So fun.
I'm sure it's gonna fall apart. Will you allow it?
No, I will not. I would help you up and make sure you're not hurt. Do you know the paperwork and the liability?
Those were great.
I'm doing some fun, good things.
That's great.
I can sign it now. Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Accardo.
Thank you.
Okay, now, as a lot of the personalized learning that happens in the middle of public schools, we rely on or it's enhanced by the technologies. So we have our Director of Digital Learning and Innovation, Jen Starr, this evening to speak to you about some of the things she's accomplished so far and some things for the future.
Great, welcome.
Thank you so much for having me here tonight too. Our audience got a little smaller, but that's all right. So Nancy mentioned, I just wanted to tell you a little bit about some of the things that we've been working on. You know, coming into the district in August, my biggest focus was on getting to know the district, getting to know the teachers, getting to review documents and look at policies and procedures that are in place. Get to know the priorities of the district. Spent a lot of time meeting with teachers and with the tech team and PLC teams, finding out the kinds of things they're using, what they wish they could do, what works, what doesn't, their hopes and dreams. And the BAPL team and the PD Committee, something I've been active in finding out what kinds of professional development and other things that support personalized learning. As well, we've established an IT'S Learning Advisory Group. We've been using IT'S Learning for a few years and there was a lot of question around whether or not we would continue using IT'S Learning. Some teachers are very invested in it. So we put an advisory group together and had a survey and asked about their use of Google Classroom and IT'S Learning and kind of paving the way for what learning management system we'll use. So there is a lot of support for using it still, so that advisory group has been very helpful making those decisions. The new Clyde Brown or the new elementary school has been another thing on our radar, of course. The learning space is there. And we've also, the tech team has established a website review to look at the navigation and content on the website and sort of tweaks some things. And now that it's up and running, what kinds of things do people want to see happening there? So we have a few initiatives that have gotten going since the school year started, a couple of big ones. We are going to be working with SchoolDude Company for our IT ticketing system and also for our inventory and asset management, which is really huge. Helpdesk is the name of the IT ticketing system and Insight is the inventory and asset management. December, we spent in training sessions with SchoolDude, setting up our, setting up the ticket system and getting the beginnings of the inventory system set up. January, well, it's hosted by SchoolDude and their product literally crawls our network and pulls in the assets into the inventory, anything that's connected on our wireless network. And also the other pieces of inventory that we have, we can put into this. So we'll be able to run reports and quickly see what we have for assets, where they are, who's using them, all that. February, we will go ahead and test out the ticketing system so that it's ready to pilot with middle school in March. And then April, May, we're hoping to be able to roll it to high school and then out to the elementary school. So that's going to help us really organize our technology projects and keep on top of the kinds of requests that come in. This, I think, will make people very excited. It's one of the first things I heard about when I came to the district. And I spent some time with the office staff. We had some webinars, we talked to Power School, and there seems to be a tremendous amount of support. And I love the Power School quote that's up here, "The happy families better data in confidence and compliance." So many reasons. There's a memo in your packet that I gave you, wrote to Nancy and to you guys about all of the possibilities. But the biggest piece is digitizing the registration materials and digitizing those back-to-school forms is going to improve our data quality and access. It's going to certainly eliminate hours of manual data entry. And as the office staff will tell you, they get these stacks of papers and they have their checklists and they check it all off. And then they figure out which few families are missing this or missing that. And then they have to hand notify or recopy. So one of the great things about this system also is it can generate a report very quickly and see which families are missing something, send a mass email out and have a link to the missing form. So hopefully we'll have a lot more buy-in for completing all of the forms. The timeline for that, that's a, that's a big implementation. There's a huge discovery process that will take place through the winter and early spring where we're gathering all of our forms. There's the possibility for making forms be multilingual, so we can have certain forms that we want to have in other languages. So that whole process of digitizing the forms is very time-consuming. We don't do that work. That's part of the process that Power School does. And so we're hoping that by maybe late spring, early summer, we'll be trying out the online process with new families and that by the, it will be ready for the fall for back-to-school with our back-to-school forms. And then by next year at this time, kindergarten registration will be done online. So a less exciting but very necessary, the online assessments that are all starting to happen. This is our first year doing the WIDA Access 2.0 testing for ELLs online. It started this morning and got through a few technical issues, being a first time through. But it is being completed mostly in January, right into February, and it's being completed on Chromebooks. And then MCAS last year was the first year the district completed any MCAS testing online. This year, all students grades three through eight will be completing it online. We'll be using iPads and Chromebooks. And the current plan is to share two carts between Clyde Brown and the middle school because we don't have quite enough Chromebooks for sixth grade. So they're going to be sharing and it's a two-month testing window. So April and May will be very dedicated to MCAS, so.
Just to clarify, WIDA is for our ELL students, if you couldn't see the small print there.
I guess it looks a lot smaller up there, sorry. Okay, we've been implementing Chromebooks this year. Ninth grade is one-to-one with Chromebooks. This is their first year with them. It's going very well. A lot of good feedback. The middle school got 60 new Chromebooks. And those went to fifth grade because fifth grade was one of the grade levels that needs to test online. And so they started out with fifth grade and now the district made a decision to have everybody who could test online, test online this year. HSA, oh, Clyde Brown also got 60 new Chromebooks. And one cart of those is in the new personalized learning lab. And the other cart is a shared cart among different grade levels. And HSA purchased seven additional Chromebooks for Clyde Brown and they were very excited about that. And then finally, we're working on a plan to try to get one-to-one Chromebooks for grade six so that we won't have to share those carts among the middle school and elementary school. We need to acquire two additional carts, so that's something that we're working on. And then this is probably the most ambitious initiative going on right now. And that is we want to develop a digital learning and innovation plan. I came to the district looking for goals and technology goals or technology plan. And there are pieces of things, but no comprehensive and strategic plan in place. So that's something that we're diving right into. So again, we wanted to be strategic. We want something that's dynamic, it's ongoing, it's adapting to the times. There used to be a time where you could have a three-year plan and in three years you'd go back and look. But it really needs to be looked at annually and changed with the times. You know, a few years ago, there weren't even iPads going online and now we have, we're taking tests on them. So so much changes so quickly. Everything that we do in the plan, of course, will be aligned with district goals and initiatives and aligned with state and national standards. And we would really like it to be representative of a collective vision. So the planning process will include a lot of stakeholders. Planning to do it in three phases. The first phase, we'll collect some data from families, teachers, students, administrators through surveys and spend some time reviewing that data. Then during Phase Two, we'll be developing goals. And during Phase Three, we'll put the plan together. And the planning team that we're trying to recruit for, starting now, is going to meet just four evenings. So one in February, one in March, one in April, one in May. We're still determining the dates for sure. And then a lot of work will be done collaboratively, online and through email, shared documents. And we'll also have a digital learning and innovation plan website where we'll have resources and all of different updates on how the planning process is going. So the planning team, the people we're trying to recruit, are staff, so admins, teachers, any staff. We will have some students from all grade levels. The students, the younger ones, will meet during the school day and get their input. And the older students would have the option of coming to those four meetings. And community members, I think, are a very important piece of this, so I'm hoping we'll get some community members and we will help get the word out and have a way to sign up for that. Anyone interested can contact me directly through the email and phone number. And do post these presentations, I can post this. I can post this presentation so the info will be there as well.
We can send it out on the list, so.
Yep, okay, thank you. The plan right now is to have five goal areas and plan the goals around those. So, we'll have something, a goal group focusing on content, instruction, assessment. And that will include digital literacy, digital citizenship, and developing some curriculum around there. Another group will be looking at professional development. And another will be looking at access and infrastructure and the nuts and bolts of how do we keep our, our network running and all of our, our devices in the hands of students and replacement plans. Next group would be looking at funding and how can we strategically fund the kinds of initiatives and plans that we are making. And then the last group will be looking at policies and procedures. There are a lot of things in place that need to either shift in time or things have happened organically and there isn't really a policy or procedure in place for them. So, clarifying a lot of that. And one of, a big piece of that will be the data and data privacy, the student data privacy. So, kind of backing up a little bit. The team itself, each subgroup, is going to have a chairperson. And that chairperson will be doing a lot of the writing of goals along, around their group other than having a huge group trying to write all together. So, just moving forward or to recap a little bit, we have a lot to finish up this year. So, we're gonna finish developing and implementing this digital learning plan. Hopefully, I have a draft timeline that was in your packet and it ends in June. So, we're hoping to be able to share a plan with you in June. And hopefully, give you some updates along the way so that it's not a surprise that your input is, is important and valid, you know, valued in there. We're complete implementing the IT ticketing and inventory system and the online registration, again, for the fall. We'll keep working with the BAPL team and keep working with the PD Committee to make sure teachers are getting the support and the training and the kinds of things that they need to use our technology really well in support of personalized learning. The online assessments, we will complete because we're, we're in, we're doing that and it's working well. And the website updates, again, we did a review. We'll start with those changes, but we would like the technology plan to really inform more changes there. And we'll continue working Clyde Brown and the learning spaces there. So, if you have any questions, this is the first time I've had a chance to sit with you, so.
I have one, actually. On School Dude, so you mentioned that it picks up the devices that are on the wireless network? Does that, will that pick up, like, student cellphones or visitor cellphones if they're on the wireless network?
No, it's limited to, it won't pick up the phones and it won't pick up the iPads. So, the iPads, we are managing through our mobile device management system and that inventory can be brought in.
Okay, all right. So, it picks up Chromebooks? Okay, great, great. That's my only question. Yeah.
On the, with the groups and when we're reaching out to the community members, I think it might be helpful to make sure that we have really kind of defined scope of what community members are gonna be involved with, responsible for. Just kind of, as we're laying out, I mean, this is, as I looked at the goals, it's a lot of, if it's related to professional development, if it's related to kind of teaching, what exactly inviting parents or general community members into a work group that they may or may not. It just, I just think there needs to probably be some definition of, if there are specific skill sets that we're looking for, and also specific responsibilities of these groups, like, you know. Reality is, as we're talking about policies, well, we set policies. You know, so they would, any policy would have to come to us for formal approval, which I, I know. But if we invite a mass community in, if they think that they're, we just need to make sure we have roles scoped out.
That was one of the reasons why having subgroup chairs would be an important piece of that because those people would be people who are highly qualified to be talking about goals in those areas. So, the person on the professional development subgroup would certainly have a strong background in professional development. And I would hope that somebody who's familiar with the policies and procedures in Millis Schools would want to be part of that subgroup. And I do think that, and ultimately, the school committee and the superintendent have a, you know, say in how we do this, so. But I do think.
Involving people is great. I just think we need to make sure people.
And just to clarify on that, too, those, the larger group meetings are open for people to talk and say what they want to say and give their input to those areas. And if they have a particular interest, offer their thoughts in that area. And then that, that smaller work group will be five subgroup chairs, myself and maybe some admins who will be able to sit and really formulate the goals, using that input. So.
So, if there's some groups, they'll make a recommendation. So, as an example, policies, you may look at best practice across school districts or some of those. And then come to the school to do some recommendations and then we can chat about those. I've had some questions over the years around social media and teachers use social media. What are they allowed? And I'll have a few questions from actual teachers and policies. And then students, their activity and what they do in the classroom or out. Is that also part of the policy recommendation?
Yeah, just to clarify, because a lot has come out, a lot has changed and students have access to their technology 24/7, so yes. Those definitely is a piece of.
Other questions? Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Anything else for your, for the superintendent's report? Okay. For subcommittee reports, the elementary school building committee. Since last we met, there was a little bit of a work stoppage due to the cold weather. So, today, I think after a, probably a four-day hiatus, they started up some, some of the equipment again. And as we get back into the warmer weather, they'll resume work right behind us. And there's been a lot of activity regarding kind of early bid package and construction meetings. And everything is still on track, on schedule. There were a lot of interested parties regarding the exterior of the building. So, a couple of weeks ago, maybe even last week, we met, the building committee met just to finalize what the exterior look would be and materials to be used for that. So, I think there, you know, everything keeps moving along. One of the items that we actually, we won't talk about tonight, but I'll just raise it because it'll be on the next meeting's agenda, is there's been some discussion around the potential for, will there be a discussion around naming the school? What's the new school's name going to be? So, we'll have it on our agenda for the next meeting to have an initial discussion about that. So, that is it. Old business, new business? Anything? Okay, correspondence?
Correspondence in your packets. You have a thank you letter to Mr. and Mrs. Stephen Cassidy to thank the Stephen and Nancy Cassidy Family Foundation for the generous donation that allowed the upgrade to the sound system in the middle-high school gym, which was in full, in full force this evening for the, for the game. It includes two wireless microphones, gives us the capacity to play music and have announcements simultaneously without interference between them. The value of this upgrade is over $2,700. And we thank very much the Cassidy Family Foundation.
Yes, it was a wonderful addition to tonight's game and very fun at halftime, so. And got a lot of positive comments from the crowd. Everyone was very pleased, so thank you very much to them. We had scheduled a working session to talk about capital planning. Unfortunately, Carrie Roach, who is spearheading that effort, wasn't able to attend tonight. So, we're gonna defer that to the next meeting. So, we will take a roll call vote to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session. Mr. Conroy.
I make the motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session for the purposes of considering playing a program against the public.
Second. It's been moved and seconded and moved to executive session. All those in further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, roll call vote, sorry. Mr. Conroy. Mr. Catalano?
Aye.
Ms. Sol?
Aye.
I'm an aye. I don't know if I have to do that. All right, so we will adjourn, not to return to executive session. And we will be back, the meeting on the 16th or the 23rd?
We moved this one.
Right, out one and kept it.
If you wish, I mean, we can, we can move it.
No, I just want to check ESPN, that's all.
Yeah.
I forget when it is.
I think it's the 16th.
I think it is, too, because I thought we were the 23rd. But we'll, we'll talk about that outside.
We can certainly move it.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you.